Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona-Cedar Grove Times and the Star-Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Schoner?
Here.
Mr. Valero?
Here.
Mr. Mandala?
Here.
Mrs. Dye?
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How you guys doing? Not uncomfortable?
Absolutely. How are you?
Not in the room?
Yeah, I think Mr. Mandala and I are quite spacious here. What do you think, Mr. Mandala?
Three guys here at this little table.
You guys look like you're doing just fine down there.
Don't worry, it's our last meeting here, so don't worry about it.
Well, don't ruin the surprise yet, right?
No.
I don't know, maybe we should stay. Anyway, so hello, Mr. Valero, your first full meeting?
Indeed.
Everybody's sitting where they should be sitting? That's fantastic.
Wonderful.
All right, then. So, any committee reports?
Yes, do you have a committee report?
No, I mean, for Policy Committee, we're going to be meeting tomorrow. We've got a whole plethora of new policy changes we'll be working on, and I think we'll be ready for the next meeting.
Sounds great. That's your report.
I attended the South End FSA on Wednesday, January 11th. Their big thing that they're doing right now is they're having a beefsteak dinner on Saturday, February 4th, from 7:00 to 11:00. It's part of their fundraiser that they're doing. And then they're also doing typically all the fundraisers that you see, box tops, candles, stuff like that. That was their big thing. For the North End FSA for this Thursday, just some things that they are doing. They are in place for their Tricky Tray, which takes place on Thursday, April 13th. It's being held at the Hanover Marriott. It's $45. It's gonna be a lot of fun. North End is starting up their Saturday preschool program again, February 4th. They weren't there for the longest time, so now they're starting it up again.
That's exciting.
Yep. North End is also having a DJ night on Friday, February 10th, from 7:00 to 8:30. And they are, have reinstituted Ice Cream Wednesdays, which was a big deal.
Huge. I was noted twice today.
I will tell you that South End is having an issue with their red, white, and blue pops because they're coming broken all the time, and the kids are very upset that they can't have any of those. I also attended the high school APT. We're actually working on, I'm working with the APT on a fundraiser. It's called Best of the Fest, which is going to be a night of short films. And it'll be four short films, then a short film from Cedar Grove students in the media program, then intermission, then another short films, then another Cedar Grove high school student's short film. We haven't finalized it yet, but generally, we're thinking March 24th, which is a Friday night. We start around 7 o'clock. We were trying to figure out the exact dollar amount, but it'll be something cheap, maybe $8 with a discount for seniors. James DiStefano, who is the media English teacher up at the high school, is doing it with the students. And also, the APT contributed to the newsletters that are on the high school building.
Which look awesome.
It looks awesome.
They're huge, by the way. I drove by them today. They're really big.
Huge, big. They're also working on Project Graduation as it moves forward. And then the biggest thing, the other thing was the Middle State Association. You know, we get accredited. It's been, right, Mr. Featherman, seven years, I think, from last time, to get accredited by the Middle States. And they broke everyone out into, I think, seven or nine different groups. I'm actually on, was on the group that was Leadership and Governance, where we look at the leadership and how it affects everything down. They ask you a bunch of questions, you're commenting on it. You're also commenting on the mission statement. And what the Middle States is about is about coming in and analyzing in a positive way what you're doing and how they can help you improve what you're doing and work through something that may not be working as well as you would like. So, it was a really, it was a fun thing. I actually kinda liked it, and we broke out into different groups. And so, we're just waiting for the next step. And it, actually, they'll come in a year from now. They don't come in until, I think, the spring of 2018, if I'm correct.
Great.
And that's it.
All right.
Oh, and I put a bunch of flyers in the back of a bunch of things that are going on. There's not too many people here tonight, but I figured, let's just promote it.
Absolutely. Nice.
Thank you. What? You took one. There you go.
We'll expect the money's back.
DJ Emilio is at the beefsteak. Yes. Flyers, I put, old flyer school events. I tried to put 'em on the table so at least people can pick it up and take one. Color copies, too. Well, you know, we're, you know, we're working it.
Very nice. Any other committee reports? All right. Moving on, we have a board presentation this evening. Mr. Kenny is here to talk to us about the HIB district and school grades report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Every year, after the state decides they have finished finalizing our grades from the 2015-16 school year, it is our duty to make a public presentation on those grades. So, here we go. So, the grades for the harassment, intimidation, and bullying district-wide comes from the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act passed in December of 2011, where it put a set of procedures in place, as well as training components, for the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. And therefore, one of the components as well is to self-evaluate or self-assess, as each school has done, through what's called the School Safety Team, which is now, after the latest revision, is called now a School Climate Team. So, this, from this point forward, you'll hear me reference that team, which was formerly the School Safety Team, as the School Climate Team. So, each School Climate Team, at the end of the year, is given a self-assessment to fill out. All right? Again, that's the first bullet up there. They are given a school self-assessment to fill out. On that School Climate or School Safety Team, you have guidance counselors, which are your anti-bullying specialists. You have administrators, a parent representative, and teachers. During the self-assessment process, they have to look at 26 indicators and whether or not they are rated zero, which is, did not meet any of the indicators or any of the, did not make any progress on it, or three, whether you've exceeded the requirements of that indicator. So, scores of these assessments are compared to a report that I have to do every six months, once at the end of January and once at the end of June, where they compare my input as far as programming and initiatives of what I input in my report, which is called an HIB ITP report, from the Anti-Bullying Coordinator, which is myself. And from the self-assessment and my report, they come and generate the grades and finalize it. Most of the time, 95% of the time, the self-assessment scores that the School Safety Team or School Climate Team gives themselves pretty much stand. I've instructed our School Safety Teams, as always, every year that we've done this, to be very critical of ourselves. We don't wanna, you know, give ourselves a point where we don't deserve a point. And that's the reality of it. Be very critical because we wanna try to do is improve what we have. So, if you decide that, you know, you may think, or there's a shadow of a doubt, don't give yourself the point for that. Go lower, and then let's work toward it. Because, in essence, you have to have that evidence to back that up. Because the state may one day come in to some of these districts that may have perfect scores all around and say, "Now, show me, you've indicated you have a three for every single indicator. Show me the evidence now. Where's your lesson plans? Where's your programming?" You know? So, in reality, if they don't have that evidence, they have to make sure they rate themselves accordingly. So, again, the state releases the final grades. They make any adjustments, and therefore, we're gonna go ahead and talk a little bit about that. So, the first school, obviously, is CGHS, and I gave a comparison of the scores, keeping in mind, I will give you the indicators thereof as far as which is the maximum. And when I say maximum, that's giving yourself a three on all of the indicators. So, for example, if you look at the HIB programs, approaches, and initiatives, that first bullet? All right? You could get a maximum of 15 on that first indicator. So, therefore, the School Safety Team rated themselves a 10. I could tell you, today, we had a School Climate Team meeting. I attended. They had some great initiatives and programs that they're going to start to be implementing. A lot of great ideas. That score will definitely rise coming into next year as far as our rating is concerned. They, again, they really took a great initiative of a lot of great ideas where all key stakeholders are gonna get involved. Not only the students, but staff, faculty, volunteers, community members as well. So, as we go along, you'll notice at the bottom here, you have a score where they did raise their score on certain elements, and certain elements they've maxed out, which they'll continue to max out because of what they're doing, they're gonna continue to do. So, I don't see those scores dropping in any way, shape, or form. So, they were given these scores. They know what they need to work on. And I think the high school, in the future, you're gonna see that score raised exponentially. Lost my clicker. In the middle school, you'll notice the middle school has a pretty impressive score. 77 out of 78. Some of the key components there is a built-in character education class that the kids cycle through, of which the other schools do not have the luxury of doing. So, therefore, they hit on a lot of key components in programming and, HIB programming and initiatives because they have built-in components to do so. They also do, I have to give them credit where credit is due, Mr. Decort, Ms. Slota, also do a lot of extensive, outside-of-the-box ideas to promote the culture of the school. As you can see, the Respect video that they do every year, amongst other things, and parent presentations as well. So, their score is well-deserved as their efforts are noted in the report itself. North End and South End, you will notice-
Just one question. Like, for example, on their HIB reporting, what would stop them from giving themselves a score? Did they delay in something, or did something happen? Like, what?
That could have been a delay in the report. Unfortunately, what it could have been was certain issues that the state saw within the report itself. So, that's something that, you know, we'd have to ask specifically.
No, I don't mean here. I just meant in general, like, what would, then you answered my question.
I do have, by the way, I do have a inquiry out right now to ask about that particular issue because I know that for a fact, as myself and Mr. Featherman, we see the paperwork that comes through regarding the HIB reporting, and we're never beyond the 10-day time limit.
Right.
If not, we're at least a day or two days in the report.
Yeah.
So, I do have a question out to them as to how, this is the state, that is, with the reporting.
That's why I asked, because I know that we're never-
We're never. Never out of compliance when it comes to-
That's why I asked what other components might be-
So, I do have a question out. I've yet to receive the answer. But for the most part, we're at least a five or a six in that category every single year.
No, it's great.
North End and South End, very similar grades. They are the same grade because they do mostly the same programming and have the elementary-type setup. So, as you can see, they went up significantly in certain areas. And stayed the same, but some of the, like I said, I have a question out on that HIB reporting component.
If you look at every school, in 2014, 2015, we maxed out on the HIB reporting, and in 2015, 2016, no one got it. So, there had to be some kind of change from the state level down.
Like I said, once I get that response, I'll definitely forward that as to why that is. But I have to go off of this and, you know, until I receive that response. So, again, as you could see, North End, and you look at South End, they are very similar. We have the same ABS leading the group. They run pretty much the same programming. So, therefore, a lot of what they do and a lot of the programs, initiatives, and how they do the investigative reporting is the same, so they have the same score there. But as you can see, they went up, where's my pointer? They went up seven points from last year, so they are making great strides in what they're trying to offer as well. So, what are we doing now as far as initiatives this year? Well, we're still working on whole-school awareness projects. As I mentioned, you have the Respect video, Panther Praise at the middle school. Our peer leaders at the high school are going to start doing things within the high school, creating videos to push out on YouTube and sending links. We're gonna tap into the English classes. You know, what area in high school does everybody have, no matter what grade? The English classes. So, if it's a snippet of a two-minute video that the language arts teachers have to play to get a quick message about improving the school culture, we would do it in the English classes. And that's, like I said, that's some of the ideas that came out of today's meeting. We had Legal One, which is the New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association. Their professional development body, come out and give all of the current anti-bullying specialists, as well as the backup anti-bullying specialists, and the, a set of administrators, training on the HIB current policy. They went into the law, changes in the law as of December, and they also went into case law as to what case law out there, is out there now essentially to tell us and guide us how to do things correctly so that we're not involved in that case law going forward. We're gonna continue to update our webpage, give resources for parents. Right now, it's available online now on the webpage, on the school website. We'll continue to update that. And we're using what's called Safe Schools Online Training. And what that is, is that's actually from our insurance carrier, where they're offering a mandated training component that all faculty and staff can log on. It's self-paced. They're online videos, snippets 15 to 20 minutes long. Some are a half hour, and it is, it is able to cover our mandated component for training for the HIB law for the year. And the good thing is, is at the end of the trainings, they can print out their own certificates. I have the capability of monitoring to see who's doing the trainings, how far along they are. I will then pass that along to the principals, if need be, and move from there. So, there's a lot of good stuff going on. I definitely see a lot of the scores rising because of some of the initiatives. And again, I'll get an answer about that training, sorry, the investigative reporting component because that kinda, I questioned that as well. I just had to do a little bit digging as to who, again, I asked for that because it's not exactly an HIB department at the state.
Yeah.
So, any questions? Comments?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned about some adjustments that were made, you elaborate on?
No, right. The, now, the state, if they look at the self-assessment, we will come in and give ourselves a grade of, you know, 68. They could come back and grade us a 65. But that's what I mean by the state making adjustments. So, they're looking at our self-assessment, and then they could come back and grade us a little bit lower, or they could give us more points depending upon, you know, what I put into the report and what they receive on their end. There's a couple of different components that feed into that. So, that's what I mean by making adjustments. Because essentially, they get the final say in what the grades are.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Always a pleasure seeing you.
Thank you again. All right, moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 through B4?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of December 20, 2016, and January 3, 2017. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers to the month of December, 2016. B3 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of November, 2016. And B4, a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriations in violation of the code, and further pursuant to the code, no major account or fund has been over-expended in violation of the code. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perulovich?
I abstain from B1, and yes for the rest.
Mr. Schoner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
I abstain from, for B1 through B4. Correct all four of them?
Mr. Mandala?
I abstain from B1 and aye to B2, 3, and 4.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
Cheater.
Can I have a motion for B5?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to pay the following list of bills for January 17, 2017 that was in our packet. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Perulovich?
Yes.
Mr. Schoner?
Abstain.
Mr. Valero?
Abstain.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Okay, under Business, we added a motion for B12 that I will read off. So, under Bills, can I, I'm sorry, under Business, can I have a motion for B6 through B12?
So moved.
Second.
B6 is a motion to accept the generous donation of one 3D Cedric printer kit from the Valero family valued at approximately $200. B7 is a motion to approve joining the Keystone Purchasing Network Cooperative Purchasing Program at no cost to the board. B8 is a motion to approve St. Catherine of Siena School purchasing security doors through the allotted funds from the non-public security aid program for the 2016-2017 school year. B9 is a motion to approve the extraordinary unspecifiable services, summarize, I'm summarizing that the brokerage services of IMAC Insurance Agency is hereby retained to provide the necessary services in conjunction with the district's insurance benefits. Number 2, the brokerage service of C. Walter Seal Insurance Agency, sorry, is hereby retained to provide the necessary services in conjunction with the district's insurance risk advisement. Both contracts are awarded without competitive bidding as extraordinary unspecifiable services in accordance with the public school contract laws listed therein. A copy of this resolution as well, as the contract should be placed on file with the Secretary of the Board. B10 is a motion to approve a change in meeting location for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year and for the time period July 7, 2017 through January 2018, from the Media Center of Memorial Middle School here to, back to North End Elementary School. The original motion was approved as B6 at the January 3, 2017 board meeting. Is it a problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
Look at the dates you just read.
I don't know.
It says July 17, 2017 to January 2018.
It's January 17, like now, right?
Right.
It should be January 2017 through July 2018.
Yeah, through, no, the January 18 is right, but it should be, it should be January 2017 now, right? Or were you saying it's because of the beginning of the school year?
I thought we said we were meaning-
Remainder. Oh, yeah, I get it. It's for the remainder of this school year, right? Of the 2016-17 school year, and for the time period, so were you trying to relate the time period?
I thought we were only doing it for this year.
Right, until reorg. So, it's the remainder of this school year.
Right.
So, effective July 1, which is next school year, through January 18, which is the next reorg meeting, will remain at North End.
I got you. Okay. So, we're saying two, we're saying two things. We're saying for the rest of this, and then going forward.
Until next reorg.
Yeah, I got it. So, we're gonna really be at North End until further notice, really, is what this is saying?
Next year. Unless we can get the Plan B in place, in which time we'll revisit that.
Right. Right. And just to interrupt all this, this is just to really be able to make us be able to be live because we've kinda heard from the public that that's what they would prefer, and that's what we're doing. And fiscally speaking, it doesn't make sense to try to do it here. It was too expensive. And we're set up already at North End, and so despite the comfy chairs, we'll be back at North End for our-
We're not taking it.
We're gonna bring the chair.
Oh, wow, gorgeous. All right. Well, then, us and our chairs will be back at North End on February 7. Moving on, the B11, sorry, motion to approve MLINK's payment application number 10 in the amount listed therein for work done at Cedar Grove High School. And B12 is a motion to authorize its investigation, to authorize the investigator to report on the conclusion of two personnel investigations to the complaints and the people investigated.
He didn't say his name. Peter Fallon.
Right. Well, it didn't have the name here, so, but... He had to kill me. Okay. So, basically, what we're doing is we're authorizing the investigator, Peter Fallon, to send the reports, to authorize reports to hear and to give letters to the people that were involved, is what all that means. Right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any discussion? And it's okay if there is. Anymore?
Do you really want us to add to this?
No. Fantastic. Roll call.
Mr. Perulovich?
Aye.
Mr. Schoner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
I abstain from B6 and aye for the remainder.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye?
Yes. Under Personnel, you got a superintendent report you'd like to talk to us about? Fantastic.
Thank you, Angel. First, we'll queue that up. We have copies in the back if you don't have one. Don't we have a liaison this year?
For what?
Student liaison? Are there pictures? Just a few, just to keep this moving along. There you go. Mr. Featherman, we have no council, student council liaison this year?
We're gonna work on that.
Gotcha.
Because we love having a representative here, don't we?
Yeah, to hear what's going on.
Absolutely.
They're slacking.
I think that's perfect. Thank you, Angel.
He doesn't like your reports.
Well, the next time you go to the APT meeting at the high school, you should mention that.
I keep getting bumped by somebody who has a crush on the APT for some reason.
We actually have, what's Lisa's, Lisa's son, who was at, you know, at LRP this past school year? Vincent, Vincent Casili? He wants to sit next to you.
Oh, right. Well, Vincent's a bit-
Vincent wants to be superintendent when he grows up.
He'd like to shadow you.
He wants to shadow you.
I welcome that opportunity.
I think that would be fun for all of us.
Absolutely, for the record.
He takes photos and calls himself the superintendent.
I gave him a lollipop, and he sat in my chair. That was, it was all downhill from there. Wonderful family, be happy to. So, as I, as I've done for the last almost year or so, just to put some life to the report, go through it quickly. Again, these are just highlights of the report that you have there. So, of course, we celebrate the CGHS Student of the Month, Gianna Duran. Not gonna read all that to you, but she's a wonderful student. She's an artist, a musician. Just a wonderful young lady deserving of the January Student of the Month. Lovely individual. So, from there, let's talk a little bit about college and career readiness. We talk about this regularly. It's never too young to start- We talk about this regularly, it's never too young to start getting ready for the next phase. And so, at South End, what do we have going on? Yes, our third graders are working with nonfiction, they're digging into finding the meaning of unknown words, they're stepping outside that box and asking themselves how to deal with informative and opinion-based, open-ended questions and answers. These are third graders here, they're grappling with, with these tasks. Yes, college and career readiness, it's embedded in the fabric of what we do at every grade level, in math and in science, they're applying strategies to calculate the area and the perimeter of figures. Who's doing that? We are. We're doing that. So they're excited about the space program, as you know, we have the Science Fair and the Cultural Arts Fair coming up. They're prepared, you'll be dazzled by what you see. Good stuff. A few more little tidbits of what's going on. How about on January 23, your very own Joshua Johns, will be here at Memorial Middle School to talk to our newspaper club about careers in journalism. Josh, stand up, take a bow, please. My goodness, you just never know when you're in the presence of greatness.
Josh, thank you, thank you for doing that.
Thank you in advance for, for bringing that to our kids here in Cedar Grove.
That's awesome.
Josh is a superstar, absolutely. How about our eighth grade algebra students creating a tutorial for finding intersection points using a graphing calculator? Who does that? We do. One more, how about the SAT prep program going on at Cedar Grove High School? We've talked about this before, no need to bore you with those details, but it's important, it's going on, we're getting ready. How about the Future Ready Summit that myself and three other members of our leadership team attended last week at NJIT? I will tell you this, it was the most saturating, the most engaging workshop I have ever been to in 24 years as an educator. We worked during breakfast, we worked during lunch, we worked at the reception afterwards on both days. It was task-oriented, it was participant-centered, and the word "technology" wasn't used all that often, I have to tell you. This summit was not about technology, it was about changing the culture of our district, changing the culture of districts that are willing to reflect on 21st century skills, learning, and assessment, and how to make us a better learning environment. What a great summit it was, we're gonna have our team that attended come back to a board meeting in the near future and present to you the topics that we were grappling with, the vision statements that as a board you'll be privy to as well as other stakeholders, we're gonna have a survey coming out to ask you what you think our vision is for 21st century learning, for future readiness here in Cedar Grove. We want to hear from all of our students, our staff, and our board, and members of the community. So as we build that vision statement, as we put together our strategic plan for future readiness, you'll all be involved, stay tuned. Technology integration in the classroom, look, this is just one small example of that, we're talking here about Soloway Hovercam document cameras. Thank you FSA again for, for being our partner in this process, not much more to say there, it's another tool that helps transform instructional practice in our district, it's that simple. But it's not simply a matter of putting a document camera in a classroom, it goes back to the culture of what we do every day. And so we're working on identifying those habits of mind that will change the culture here, that will move us from a sage-on-stage sort of approach where the teacher's dictating content and process, to a much more student-centered, technology-assisted, personalized place to learn. We're excited, can't wait for the team to come here and excite you with some tasks and some videos and some participation, stay tuned, good stuff going on. Quickly, briefly, we mentioned middle states, Mr. Schoner, a member of that team. Look, it's an extensive process. Middle states accreditation is no small task, it involves looking at your organization from top to bottom, from facilities to curriculum to leadership. And so, they're going through that now. My first year as principal here, yes, eight years ago was the last time we did it, and so it's time again to secure accreditation. And with that comes a lot of work, and we're excited to take part in that. How about our return to North End? Of course, this is a brief statement from Ms. Dyer, our principal there, again, it's just thanking everyone from, from the board to Woodland Park, to Mrs. Zunick for organizing, for mobilizing volunteer from the community to help get that school ready for our kids. It was a sensational launch on January 2nd, we're thrilled to have been there. Quick reminder, public service announcement, our next coffee talk is Thursday at 7:00 PM. Do we have a board liaison to join me? Oh, wonderful. So please join myself and board president, Mrs. Dyer, Thursday night at 7:00 PM at North End School, see you there. And just a couple of quick photos of North End, home sweet home, it's just what a great place to, to have returned to, awesome, more on that later. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that all that's going on, really? And as a reminder, that is on our board website, right?
Preses?
Right?
Well, we've sort of been keeping them to ourselves as preses, but we do publish the full report.
Okay, that's way snazzier. It way, yeah, it like pops out at you, I don't know.
I could probably talk with our IT professionals and figure a way-
A way to make that happen, okay, if possible, okay. It just, I don't know, looks, I mean, you know, the written one of the nine million things that's going on is very riveting as well, I'm just saying, but for those people who just want that snapshot, as you described, that might be-
For the fast food generation and all of us.
That's exactly it. I was thinking more of the Cliff Notes, but yeah, that's good too. Alrighty, thank you again. Okay, appreciate it. Moving on, under personnel, can I have a motion for S one? Oh, boy, really, you're gonna make me read S 18 through S 18?
Go for S 18.
S 18 is crazy. S one through S 18.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. S one is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S two is a motion to accept the letter of retirement of Susan Davis, South End Principal Secretary, effective July 1, 2017.
I love her.
I love her too. She's been there since, like, forever.
Forever.
I know.
Since my kids.
Yeah. Motion to accept the letter of retirement of Lori Sadati, a North End Principal Secretary, effective July 1, 2017. That's sad.
Yeah.
Everybody's retiring. Motion to appro, or, S four, sorry, motion to approve on second reading. Yeah. Oh, I thought you were pausing me.
No, I think we're, we're okay with that.
If they're retiring? Well, not really, but if they want to.
I meant S four.
Oh.
I was gonna say, that was not, I was like, wow.
Well, we're not okay, but I mean, you know, it's a life decision. I don't think we have the power to change that, I'm sorry.
Wow.
I love hanging out with you guys. S four, is S four, yeah?
Well, we had discussed the chaperones.
Right, and we have the required chaperones, and life is good, and we're approving it, they're going to Vermont, like we said they were gonna. Of course, they're going to Vermont. Motion S four, motion to approve on second reading, the Cedar Grove-Vermont Beatles Exchange Concert between Cedar Grove High School and the Mount Anthony Union High School in Bennington, Vermont, which is gonna happen in May 2017. S five is a motion to rescind Rafael, really, La, La Riquente Sub Sue Custodian, Cedar Grove School District, at the rate listed. S six is a motion to reimburse Mr. Vincent Valero, board member, for fingerprinting expenses in the amount listed. S seven is a motion to reimburse David Schoner, board member, for fingerprinting expenses in the amount listed. S eight is a motion to approve the following as a school volunteer. S nine is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteer for fingerprinting expenses at the rate listed. S 10 is a motion to amend the North End maternity leave replacement teacher contract for Ann Murphy from April 4, 2017, to May 5, 2017, to provide additional coverage. S 11 is a motion to approve Thomas Muggin, home instructor, retroactive to January 9, at the curriculum rate listed therein. S 12 is a motion to approve payment for the student ID listed to attend the annual Cedar Grove High School project graduation. S 13 is a motion to approve Steve Gallagher for reimbursement in the amount listed therein for completion of the New Jersey Leaders-to-Leaders Mentorship Program. S 14 is a motion to approve the Cedar Grove Middle School Music Program for the summer 2017. S 15 is a motion to approve Charlotte Gavira, thank you, teaching a sixth grade English, effective February 1, 2017. S 16 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S 17 is a motion to approve the following leave of absence. And S 18, I have to read all that?
Would you like some of the rest?
Well, no, it needs to be read, I'm the one to read it. S 18 is a motion to approve the following resolution to commend the efforts of board members throughout New Jersey during School Board Recognition Month. We didn't make this up, right? This is, okay, this is the real deal, all right. Whereas, the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2017 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members. And whereas, the Cedar Grove Board of Education is one of more than 581 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts. And whereas, the Cedar Grove Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students. And whereas, New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-K through 12th grade. And whereas, New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members, who receive no renumeration for their services, act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education. And whereas, school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs. And whereas, boards, boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the schools. And whereas, New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores and the preparation for college through advancement, advanced placement offerings and SAT assessments. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cedar Grove Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local board, school board members throughout New Jersey as we join community statewide in observing January 2017 as School Board Recognition Month. And be it further resolved that the Cedar Grove Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs towards the advancement of our children's education. That means yay us.
Do we actually get plaques?
I hope we get a plaque.
I can't believe you read that whole thing.
I was told I had to read the whole thing. I, you know, yes, no, there's no more discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Berhulovitch?
Aye.
Mr. Schoner?
Aye to everything but S seven, I'm gonna abstain from S seven.
Not from 18, right?
Not from 18, no, I want a plaque.
Another plaque. I'm abstaining from S six and aye to the remainder.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes. All right, under curriculum, can I have a motion for S 19?
So moved.
Second.
S 19 is a motion to approve the following curricula that has been revised or aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Berhulovitch?
Yes.
Mr. Schoner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
Finally, an unequivocal aye.
Yay.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes. The fun continues. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Yes?
I didn't want to-
Nope, you have to kind of, there's a process, you have to stand up, kind of, name and address, that's okay.
It's just for the community, we, this is taped.
No, I understand, I just-
Thanks.
And just kind of look that way.
No, you don't have to.
Well, they should, it's on wheels.
Look at the camera, that's good. Leo Stringer, for Hivuterra, Cedar Grove. My question is related to, more to S four, the student trips for overnight. So I've learned, I guess, kind of the hard way, that last week we learned that the parents are no longer welcome as chaperones for overnight trips, and that's a, that's a big concern. But I've always been lucky enough to be able to help chaperone since fifth grade, the day trips, and then last year I started with my daughter, who's 10th grade, the music trip to Universal Florida, and I think it went very well. We had eight chaperones, two teachers. And without chaperones, I think it's gonna be very difficult trips, if these trips happen at all. So I can't see that we're gonna have that many teachers going on these trips, available for trips, and missing school time and paying no way. So I don't understand why this, why this process was changed without, without anyone really knowing that it changed, or when it changed. So I think that's a very, not a, not a good decision, in my opinion, because I think we had, if there's problems with certain parents or some, whatever happened to change the rule, I don't know. But I didn't see any problems with the music trips, any of the trips I've been on. We've always let the teachers run the show, chaperones are there to help. And now we've been taken out of the, out of the loop and told that we cannot chaperone. That's exactly what I've, how I've heard it, so.
What, what happened was, is that through the years, there have been incidences that have left the board open for liability, and with parents as chaperones that we're supposed to be responsible. And luckily, we did not find ourselves in a situation with that, and with advise, advice, strong advice from our attorney, these types of trips leave the board open to liability and to be sued, to be quite honest with you. And we don't, we're hoping, we've been discussing ways to try to accommodate, but we haven't been able to, but it's not, as of right now, it's just sort of a protective measure for the district. So it's not saying that in the future, or, we're not, it's not that, we're talking about it now and trying to come up with ways to make it work, but until that happens, and until our attorneys give us, you know, the go-ahead that it would leave the board, you know, free of any type of liability, then-
That makes, that makes sense to me, but not to do it as a sudden, after a trip's been planned, to say, guess what?
It wasn't, that's, it's the way it was communicated to the parents, but this has been a policy now for the year. So, all the-
A school year?
Yeah.
Okay, it wasn't communicated, that I know of, and I went back and tried to find minutes, I don't, I don't know where it's been communicated.
We actually did it with the, all the sports-
All the sports programs this year.
That were taking place in the fall.
Yeah.
And all teachers and coaches have been made aware of the policy, so prior to the, the planning of the Vermont trip, Ms. Jessen was aware of the chaperone situation.
Yeah, I'm sure she'll make the Vermont trip what happened, I'm sure it's still-
Well, yeah, we approved it, we just approved it, so it's happening, right.
But I'm thinking, if this was last year, would the Florida trip happen? I would think no. Would you be able to run a trip, an overnight, five-day trip overnight?
Well, it depends, there's, there's some organizations that are, and there's some organizations that are not. For example, our baseball team is going to North Carolina or South Carolina for three or, for four days, and the girl softball coaches, they decided they did not want to take that on. So it really depends on who's running the program or running-
And the international club went to China last year.
But I disagree with the taking it on, because I don't think we should put any coach in that position to have that many students with such a limited-
No, they could find other chaperones, it just cannot be parents.
And that's what all the clubs have done.
Who can it be?
It's other teachers.
Teachers, administrators, and that's what's happening in Vermont.
And that's what happened with Vermont, that's what happened with baseball, that's what happened with AP history.
That's what happens with the international trip.
The international trip.
But as parents, you're taking us out of the loop, you're making us told that we're, okay, we're not welcome.
No, parents can absolutely still go.
We can still go, we've been, yeah, I understand we can't still go. But if it's gonna, I could see that it's gonna keep trips from happening, like it did with the girl softball. That's, that's what it's gonna do, because girl softball, you put them in a position, maybe if they were able to have a few parents, additional chaperones, they could have had that trip. Maybe we should have, now in sports, you have to have background checks or whatever other, whatever regulations you want to have the parents to be trained in CPR and whatever else.
That doesn't prevent the level of liability that the board takes on, and that it becomes an issue that if a parent...
Are we not liable with teachers?
What? Well, no, the teachers actually work for us. They work for the district. So when, when you go away with parent, if parents go away, it becomes a question, when you're a kid, who are you listening to? Your parent or the teacher who's in, in charge?
Right. But you have students coming from middle school up to high school expecting that they're gonna be going on trips, and now they're gonna find those trips are gonna be gone.
I, we feel confident that the trips will continue.
We don't see any trips being gone.
Okay. My opinion, we had, with the 10 people, chaperones, we had eight and two. That was, that worked out really well on the trip I went on. If that was only three or four, three teachers, I don't, I think that would be a very difficult trip.
Well, we also have a policy in place, depending on how many students are going, we have to have the same, there's a ratio of students to chaperones.
Yes.
So it'll never happen where you'll have 30 kids and only three chaperones.
Exactly. So what would be, if you can't find teachers willing to sacrifice a week, what, and your only recourse is that there's no trip? You're not giving any options.
They can find other people that are not parents to chaperone.
That doesn't sound that easy to me, because parents are willing to sacrifice...
But it's happening right now, though. Like we just said, international, they went away, they went to, where'd they go the first year? They went to Barcelona or wherever the heck they went. They went to China last year. They're going to Costa Rica in April. And they're going to South Africa the summer of 2018.
Okay.
The AP Hist, and that's 20-something to 40-something students, where the ratio is eight to one. And they have found chaperones willing to take that on.
AP History?
AP History is going to Washington DC.
Every year.
Every year they go, without incident.
Okay.
So the baseball team, they're going to Myrtle Beach, right? And there isn't an issue there. Cheerleaders are going to Atlantic City, that's happening, and there's no issue there as well.
It's just, it's hard to me to see. I could see parents willing to sacrifice, not going there, that's just because you're a child there, going there to make the trip happen, make it a, make it a possibility. Thinking that you appreciate the help, we need the help, that we don't have them, you know. We can't, I don't, I wouldn't expect teachers to be going on every trip.
Well, there's a lot of teachers in the district, so people can choose which ones they want to go on.
Well, the teachers will pay their own way.
And what would happen if, for example, a scenario happens where a child gets hurt, God forbid, on one of these trips, and there's parents that are chaperoning, and then all of a sudden the finger pointing starts happening, "Well, I thought you were watching, well, I thought you were watching", and it's your kid, God forbid, that got hurt. Who would you blame?
It would be a teacher. The teachers are responsible for the whole trip.
No, but they're signed chaperones.
And you're a signed chaperone. You need, as a chaperone, you need to take on the responsibility.
If you have 60 kids, how can one teacher be responsible for all the 60 kids? If she has the parent chaperones.
Well, exactly. I'm not saying...
And who do you sue?
I'm saying chaperones should be definitely responsible.
But I'm saying, who would point, who would take responsibility?
Hopefully a chaperone that's responsible for them.
And when that doesn't happen...
And again, in the trips I've been on, I haven't seen that.
Thank God.
Of course, I've seen chaperones that are willing to take responsibility.
Right, but it really opens up the district to a lot of liability, because in the event that Mr. Mandala just mentioned, you can't sue the parent, you're gonna sue the district. And if a parent made the wrong decision on behalf of the district, then that opens up the district to problems.
Well, I understand that, but I also understand that this policy's been in place since, you know, 2000?
Which policy?
We recently changed the policy, though. That's what we're saying, we recently changed the policy.
Right, but what I found in the writing was that, we've had this policy for 16 years, why all of a sudden changing it now?
Because there's incidents that have happened that brought it close to the board being sued.
And there's also been towns nearby, in the past couple of years, that had major problems with this incident, with these types of problems. So we look at that as well, and that's what our attorneys also advise us on. So when we think about these things, it's based on the safety of our kids, first of all, and the liability to the district, because we have a fiscal responsibility to our parents.
I understand. I, I understand the safety, I'm all for the safety, but I don't understand that you'd be able to get the, the ratio on every trip of enough...
Well, so far, we've been pretty successful.
Except for the girl softball, that was canceled.
Right.
That was canceled for this policy, correct?
Well, they just didn't want...
They decided they didn't want to take on the liability on their own.
But if they were able to have parents as chaperones...
No, that, parents aren't an option, so that wasn't...
But if they were, if this was last year...
If it was last year, under the old policy, then yes, but it's not last year.
It was canceled because of the new policy.
It was canceled because they chose not to take on the liability to bring the girls to Florida. That's why it was canceled. Whereas, the AP History took on the liability.
I disagree with that. I'd say it was canceled because they were not given the option to have enough people as chaperones.
We gave them the option to find chaperones.
They absolutely did have the option.
Absolutely.
As teachers.
Absolutely.
And if teachers aren't available, and parents are willing to help, you don't want the parents' help.
No, it's against our policy, that's correct.
I understand where it's litigation is where we're, it's sad.
Litigation and safety.
Litigation, right.
And safety.
Well, the safety, you don't, as parents, we should be entrusted with the safety of our, not just our kids. We should be able to be safe.
And I'm saying, we had experiences where that wasn't the case.
So in the interest of safety for our kids, we've changed the policy.
Okay. All right, it's just a sad, it's sad that it was changed for that reason.
Well, there was a reason, it was safety.
And there's specific, specific issues that happened?
Yes, that is correct.
Well, that's what, as parents, we're not given that, and we're not told this information. We're told that this is going, what the policy is, and all of a sudden it's different.
But that, that's why we like when you, people come and ask questions and not just listen or figure out, or think that we're doing it, you know, just because.
And as we've said, Mr. Featherman's...
The way we, now as parents, was last weekend's trip, and then by the way, parents can't be chaperoned.
Right, so if anybody has a question about any policy or anything, as I've stated, Mr. Featherman is always available to chat about anything at all. His door is always open, his phone is always available, and he could easily explain to anybody, right?
So as parents, we have no say in changing the rule.
Absolutely, and I think I start at the beginning of this by saying that we're looking at trying to come up with a way to make it work.
Yeah, I think, I think possibly we could offer, like, give parents training or... I, I agree, I agree that every parent should be automatically approved as a, as a chaperone. My own daughter, I agree with that. I definitely, I agree that she's some kind of criteria to be a chaperone. Experience and character and things like that. Whatever, whatever you want to make that big. But to me, it just came as a surprise. It was suddenly thrown on us, it just wasn't publicized.
To be honest with you, it should have never been part of the offering, because we made this a policy way before this was planned, so it should have never been part of the planning procedure to begin with.
Me for this here?
Yes.
On that, we're, we're now on base on previous here, so we're, we're thinking that nothing has changed since last year. What would make me think that the policy changed? Been there since 2000, why am I gonna think after 16 years all of a sudden, oh, we can't, we can't be chaperoned?
Mr. Stringer, I'll, I'll take, I'll take some blame for that. I mean, perhaps there would have been a different way for myself to push out that information. And you're making a good point. I mean, we had come, we had bumped into this issue some time ago with athletic trips. And so how would the Music Matters community, for instance, had known that the board had changed their position on that? So I'm wondering how I could have perhaps, you know, pushed that information out differently? I mean, you, you're, your points well taken.
Yeah, of course, I'm not talking for all of Music Matters, I'm not a Music Matters officer, and I don't just happen to volunteer as a chaperone.
Fair, but, but this being the first time that Music Matters bumped into this policy change is, I think, your point. And, you know, so perhaps I could have, you know, found a better way to push it out to the, to the staff and to the...
Maybe different, because I know with the Music, with the Music Matters trips, I've noticed it, it was very well organized. With Jessen and Sabina, organized very well. All the chaperones got along, we let them run the show. We had no difficulty, but of course, that wasn't an issue.
To be honest with you, 99% of our programs are fine. Like, there's, I, it, this again is just based on advice from our, our attorneys and what is going on in other areas. And, you know, we're trying to just be proactive instead of, God forbid, an incident happens and then we change a policy. So that's really what's going on. It's not trying to, you know, kill these programs or hurt these programs.
Absolutely not.
And that's why I said to you, we're trying to come up with solutions to really make this happen, where parents can go on these. And I threw out, you know, we've thrown out, we, and again, it, it's, it's not even something that we know can happen, but it's like, you know, if, if we're able to legally somehow separate the board of ever being liable, then, and again, I don't know if that's able to happen, but these are discussions that we're having and that we're going to continue to have with our attorney to see what can be done to come up with a solution where everyone's happy.
Most of it is not known beforehand, and not knowing what options. Because, and I'm also thinking budget-wise. So if you have a group that doesn't have funding, so everything's funded, and now parents aren't going, parents pay their own way, paid their own way last year, now you're gonna, if you have a teacher or a faculty, are you expecting them to pay their own way, volunteer, pay for a Florida trip? I'm thinking not.
Well, those organizations that do the sports, they seem to have the money to afford to have the, you know...
Yeah, but it's just not knowing, but you have to plan that and defend it.
Absolutely.
Like with the Vermont trip, this trip, my understanding of that was, the planning process started, maybe it was fully approved, and so tonight, I'm not sure.
Right, but for the international trip, chaperones paid over $3,000 or more to go on those trips. And there was a...
Yes, but in fairness to the board...
As a parent, I would be, well, I'm willing to chaperon the trip if my, my daughter's, you know, selfish to my daughter's going on it, like make it happen. I'm not going on a trip to babysit my daughter, but then I'm actually, oh, the opposite.
Plus, at that age, they don't want any of the money.
No, they don't want anything to do with you, no, pretty much, no.
Yes.
Yeah, but in fairness to the board, Mr. Stringer, the, the first reading was on January 3rd, so maybe we have to look at, you know, how far in advance where the board is getting the first read to these kinds of trips. I mean, Mrs. Jessen and I had spoken about presenting to the board prior to the, to the holiday break, but she was engrossed in preparing for the winter concert and chose to wait until afterwards. So we probably would have had, not probably, we would have had this discussion, you know, a month earlier than now. Not that it might have, might not have made any difference, but... So the timing of things sort of bumped into holiday concert preparation, and so the folks that were going on this trip, which is scheduled for May, would have known a little bit sooner of the policy change. So there were kind of a few different things that bubbled.
I think now that's publicized, now go forward, get it publicized.
And I think we've gone almost full cycle now through from the beginning of spring, and now we're approaching the spring again. I think we've pretty much gone through a full cycle of trip planning.
All trips.
And now we know what the expectations are.
And I feel that for the girl softball, that was, in my opinion, was canceled because the policy was, may not have been known.
There were some different issues there, so that, you know, I'm not gonna... Yeah. But it was, it was the right decision for our coaching staff not to go, and we respect...
Okay, but it's good to know in the future.
But we hear, we hear...
Thank you for, thank you for listening.
No, we understand, you know, we totally do, and, you know, and like, we're, we're always open, and we have not, it's not a closed conversation. You know, we're open and we're still exploring it, so it might have variations in the future, so...
I'm thinking on certain trips, when it's a large area, like a music park or whatever, that you want to have, maybe not official chaperones, but someone to keep an eye on. It's really, we need the eyes in here. You don't need parents doing anything other than keeping track of it. That's amazing.
And that's why we still encourage parents to attend these trips. You know, certainly for day trips, parents can be chaperones, not changed up. Day trips is fine. Again, we're still inviting parents to attend these overnight trips, just not in an official capacity. So by all means, as an educator for quite a while, I...
Actually, there's a different...
I want eyes in your hair.
So if you're still going, not official capacity.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely, yes.
You can absolutely go.
You're still chaperones, you're still...
Well, no.
No.
Not chaperones, no, no.
You're there.
You're there, on the same trip as your child.
But you're not chaperoning, you're not assuming the risk of...
Right, you can't travel with them and you can't stay with them, but you're allowed to attend the same event, absolutely.
Not assuming the responsibility, as per policy.
That's what it is.
Chaperone...
Right.
Takes on.
Okay. Is that, is the, the legal process get a little...
Exactly.
Different world.
Unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks for coming, thank you.
Anybody else wanting to speak? All right. I closed this portion of the meeting. It is cold, I think they should have the heat. It's a hint. I know.
Keeps you awake, though, keeps you awake.
They wanted us to go back to the event. All right, future meetings, announcement, February 7th, and the location is not to be determined, will be at North End. 7:00 PM Executive, 8:00 PM Regular, and then February 28th, again, North End, 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM Regular Meeting. Any further comments or anything?
No.
See you on the 7th.
All right.
Just remember, I won't be here on the 7th.
That's right, you will not.
Okay. Oh, that means we can't have the photo of Mr. Circa Fitz on the 7th. That poor guy, I'll have to let him know. Will everybody be here on the 28th?
Yes.
February.
February?
Yes.
Okay, then I will see about rescheduling our, our photo up, so... Alrighty. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
So moved.
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perulovich?
Aye, aye, aye.
Mr. Shonner?
Aye.
Mr. Valero?
Aye.
Mr. Mandala?
Aye.
Yes. Good night, everyone.